First order of business is to approve the agenda.
I approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved. So carried. Everybody have a chance to read the February 21st council meeting?
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved, so carried. Recommend approval of the list of claims from February 2023. Anybody can look at them. Any questions on any of them?
Cheryl, did we find out if the auditors are going to be able to come up and present their audit?
They're going to do remotely.
During the council meeting?
Whenever we want them to.
To review the account balance and disbursements ledgers and financial statements for the general order to refunds for February 2023?
Make a recommendation of table that till next Tuesday?
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
So carried. To accept a donation of $4,000 again from the Rainier Park Club. Now this ain't the same $4,000 that we got on before, right?
No.
Well, I appreciate that. If we get a recommendation?
I'll make a recommendation.
I'll second.
And a recommendation is second, all in favor?
Aye.
I don't think there's going to be any delays. So thank you again. Question on that, is that, I mean, that's not pretty for a monthly deal, is that a normal income?
No, well, for a while it is. It's been doing so good and all, so, yeah. So it's like it's going good.
Anyway, appreciate it, thank you. Recommend accepted the February liquor store operating statement. Jen, here, take a look at it. Any issues over there, Jen?
No, none.
You guys all set, ready for the weekend?
We are.
What's this weekend?
The old timers hockey tournament, so.
Was it this weekend?
Yes.
All right, so that should always be a big kicker.
Yeah.
Other than just attending tomorrow, it pretty well does itself, right? You have no special events, right?
Well, we'll have a DJ and everything for that weekend.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's a big weekend.
Any other questions on the statement?
I just want, I just go ahead. Comment and it'll always be that comment, but the gross profit from last year was 66% and now it's at 62%. Just one of those things that I know the prices are going. Just keep an eye on stuff, maybe had better specials this year. Who knows? But just something to keep an eye on.
Okay.
Because it's, I know you have more sales, but the gross profit basically was about the same for the net profit. And it's just in that percentage. I know, I know stuff still going up. Just something to keep an eye on.
That could reflect the weight, since last year we.
Absolutely.
No, that was the price profit is before.
No, it's before the weight.
Yeah.
That's the gross profit that before they take anything off. It's just that last year it was 66.42%, this year it's 62.4%, which is still good, but it's that the expenses are just going. It's hard to keep up sometimes. Just something to look at. Like I said, maybe you had better special rather than $9,000 or whatever. Just something to look at.
Okay.
Keep an eye on it. You don't want it to get away from you. Other than that, I think it's great.
Get a recommendation?
I'll make a recommendation to accept the liquor store operating statement.
I'll second.
And a recommendation is second, all in favor? Approved, so carried, thanks Jen.
Thank you.
And recommend the team contract for the liquor store.
I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approved, so carried. Mean to report, obviously Nick's not here because some, I suppose he called surgery, which a bunch of stitches, right? So he's getting still calling. Have it all again, his arm's hurt again, so. He's still under remand, I guess is what I call it.
Remand, yeah. He opened his door probably.
Yeah. Kind of got a little over ambitious, I think, or not ambitious, but maybe aggressive with his healing process. Hard to keep him down. Is there anything, everybody sees it, he needs attention, other than, who would be paying attention with his staff?
Just at the time of year.
Yeah, make sure the catch bases stay open, there'll be some culverts coming up. But again, that's something we usually get the county to pay attention to. If we can't do it ourselves or take care of water, the county's good to just emanate culverts and stuff like that, so we'll pay attention to that. Other than that, I think I have, we had a couple of water breaks. Well, I don't know whether we should be talking about that, I guess we probably should be looking at that. I'm going to, I guess I could take the lead on this if it's all right. It's the, on 30, County Route 132, we had breaks here last year. And it's kind of where the end of our walk in the Sunset Pond water line is. And we may have to replace, and I'm not sure, it looks about 400 feet of it. Again, something I wanted to talk to Nick from where the previous breaks were and the current breaks and wasn't bad last year. And it ends on some bedrock that comes up there and from the bedrock it goes down. We have continual problems with it. The line is 46 years old. It is PVC. The pipe itself probably shouldn't have lasted that long, had it been tuck out iron. I think it's because of the different soil conditions is why we're having issues there. Once I know how far that is, I maybe can estimate a cost estimate when we get to that council. There is 80, what Cheryl, 85, 86 thousand dollars in the Sunset Cove maintenance budget. So it isn't that we can have the money for it, but again, we'll see how much it is. I can give a rough cost estimate. With that said. Maybe, maybe you could speak a little bit Cheryl to recommend the resolution for supporting the grant for the Rainier Park. Give us just a little background on how to be on the grant. Kind of a scope 10,000 foot picture, maybe, of what we're asking for.
Last year, probably, how about this time? We had a committee of people that sat with engineers to come up with a conceptual plan. And we kind of threw in every single thing that could be possible. And then after we looked at all that and the price was really big, so we went back and pared it down. And we're trying to get it closer to 200,000, which is easier to get, to get a grant for. And still have some nice upgrades to the park for accessibility and parking and drainage and things like that. Some of the other things that, like new equipment, the rent club has, is committing to purchasing some equipment and things like that. So the thought is to apply for the 200,000 or less grant, the LCCMR.
How, how much, 200?
Yeah.
So obviously there's not a pickleball court in there, right?
No.
No. We determined that there would be too much tree clearage to do that to some degree. And it's kind of allowed sport, nor less it was cost.
And to have pickleball on the park for three, four, five months, maybe you could play. Maybe, I don't know if it's worth the money.
Well, then you have to add fencing and all that other stuff, which takes away from the natural.
Yeah, I think we can do more with the dollars.
So we're, we were looking at, and I haven't looked at the updated concept, but I think there was, we were going to try to do it. Some updated picnic stations and another.
Pavilion thing.
Pavilions, so that people can have more than one event going on there during the weekends for birthday parties or refamily reunions. So, I mean, you can do most good for the, a less amount of money to, I mean, why people go there already? And then with the new equipment and redoing the basketball courts. And keeping up with the basic footprint of what we have now. But also adding in that accessibility factor for wheelchairs. So they were gonna, they were gonna look into a more accessible sidewalk leading from a paved parking area that goes to the, some of those pavilions and over the bridge to the park itself, so.
Did I hear something about basketball courts?
They're gonna redo, redo the basketball court.
Has there been any interest in that?
Well, they play a lot over there.
Yeah, I'd look right across, there's, I heard that all, all summer long.
I almost say that they play more here than anywhere else in town in the area.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I'm asking, you're there, you can see kind of what's used, what's not used, what's current.
They've started using the horseshoes again.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, well, recommend resolution to support the grant. And now, are we trying to approve the LCMR grant?
I'll recommend the resolution 2023-3 to support the grant on the LCCMR for the Rainier Park.
I'll second.
Recommendation is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved, so carried. Recommend the increase in water rates. Can you bring me a copy of what they're recommending here?
They're looking at what the fall is going to raise it up and then what we're raising it up. Are we just going to break even? I mean, we're getting, we're working. Underwater, if we should make sure we raise enough to break even, if we don't break even, we just take it from.
They're, they are raising it two and a half percent, so I raised it two and a half percent. And then I raised the escrow dollar 45. So it would be, you know, like $2, $2.65 above at the least for each customer. If you want to look at raising a little bit more, but certainly the time to do it, they're going to raise it again next year also.
What I guess I'm driving at is if we're going to still show four, $5,000 negative every month, we've got to take it out of the general fund anyway, which is the public's money anyway. Why don't we make it so we at least break even? Spread it out to all the residents and at least break even. We're so close to breaking even now, we're way apart over the last eight, nine years, we've brought it together, but. Isn't this a good time to maybe make sure we break even?
If that's what you guys want to, want to do, yes.
That's what I'm recommending.
In the end, we break even if you don't count depreciation. But certainly you are putting a lot of money back for.
Right. Well, we have to add that money for the escrow, somebody's got to repair it. They hate to not have the money all the time. I mean, a lot of this stuff's getting old and it's. So the, the escrow is one thing, but just to make sure as citizens that we're paying the water, just so the community can break even. It's not even going to be a money maker, but.
Right.
It seems like every year we have to take some out of the general fund anyway, so it's probably good to pay Paulie and Mike to just make it so we at least. At least break even. So that would be my recommendation.
So what's the percentage that brings us even? Do we figure out? Does it, what is it? Would we have to do 3%? 3.5%?
3%, 3 or 3.5% would probably do it.
I would do 2.5.
3.5%? Which.
Because then we're just chasing our tail for next year anyway. Raise it up another 2.5%. We don't want to reason, quit all at once.
Right. And then raise the escrow?
I do the escrow, isn't the escrow fairly comfortable work?
Well, we talked about that during our council meeting, to raise the escrow also.
I mean, I'd raise it for whatever you have here. But I don't think we have to raise it any more than what you've suggested here. But I'd raise that other stuff a little bit more.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just thinking it's, we're never going to catch up. And I don't know if we can with the way.
The way they structure.
The way the raise is structured, I don't know if we'll ever catch up. And I think we've done a great job over the last seven, eight years bringing the gap to, bringing us up to gap or something.
I could support that, that 3.5%.
And if it, and if it works out, maybe then we don't have to raise it too much actually, it's still going to have to probably. But that's what I would recommend, it would be 3.5% instead of 2.5% just to keep up. And then the monthly escrow, we just do exactly what you have, now you'd be fine, at least we're putting some money away for repairs and replacements.
I think with the new county board too, there may be some more energy there.
Correct.
Independently, we may, may be able to look into talks with International Falls and forming a water district. That's the only way International Falls is going to get a reduced rate, you get, you know, they can get their water rates down. Trying to get more customers. Obviously, you know, they got, it would need much work from what I heard on their plant. Water treatment plants and all that stuff, so.
So Cheryl, we need to have.
There's grants available for that. And so I think I'll have conversations with the county, new coming board, and there'll be three new coming commissioners. On staff that are, let's see if they have any action.
There's going to be four in the ones, because you got two that are already, no ones replacing Terry Murray and then the other one. So they're going to have actually four of the places on there.
They may have appetite to look into something like that, along with the cooperation of International Falls. We may be able to form a district, because I do know there's funding available for lab rehabs, water main extensions. And, you know, we're very limited here, I mean, we should have water as far as the world, we should have water out there. I mean, that's what I do for a living, and I know how far they run, though. There's water everywhere except in the area where we got the pot water. So it seems kind of assing, but again, it'll hinge on how, I think, the city of International Falls, what their appetite or something like that is, along with the county. So I'll have some conversations in the future about that, see what it thinks, maybe we can make, start, start working in that direction.
We do need, we do need to make a recommendation, so I'll make a recommendation that we increase water rates by 3.5%.
2.5%?
3.5.
3.35. We have a recommendation?
I'll, I'll second that.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved, so carried. What the sewer district surcharge increase?
Were you guys able to understand what, what they did with this floating five-year average?
Yeah.
So 2022 was the flood year and. The trick, they were, you know, treating the floodwater, it wasn't.
It wasn't sweet.
It wasn't effluent, right, it was I and I, and that's not.
I and I.
That's not going to, yeah, it was I and I, that's not ever going to be that again unless there's a flood like that again. So it's, it's skewing the five-year average.
I see that.
Which is kind of, which is almost $500 a month extra that they will want us to pay until next year when they do the five-year average again, which will still be skewed.
Yeah, because that 20.2 is going to skew it for the next five years.
It's going to skew it for the next five years, and we already paid to treat it. But this is their formula that they use, so I, you know, I don't know if someone was to go meet with them from the council and discuss that. We paid in sewer bills last year almost $30,000 more than we normally would have because of treating.
Yeah, because the annual, the annual flow over four years from 2018 to 21 is, let's just round it up to like 4,800 or 4,800,000, whatever. Now it's 11,760, so it's like 6 million more, so come on, we know where the 6 million more is from. It's from the flood, do we have to get punished for that for the next five years?
Usually with like a good data set, you, you throw the lowest and you toss out the highest, and that's how you get your, your more firm average. And I don't know, maybe just average the last previous four years to get what the fifth year would have been and just ignore 2022 altogether. I don't know if that's possible, but it seems unfair.
I think if the counties are involved, the sanitation districts are involved, and we ourselves look into it. When all this additional pumping is necessary, rather than running through the sewer district. If we can look and see what the rules and regulations are so that the FEMA would pay for the additional pumping. We had additional pumping, when we set up pumps where you're not treating sewer, obviously it's not sewer, but it's getting infiltration. So at some point, we have to be able to hire a pumpers. If it goes through the sewer district, they didn't pay us, right Cheryl?
Right, correct.
But if we pumped it ourselves or hired someone to pump this infiltration water that was getting in here, so it has to be set up so that there's a. A way, basically, we could get relief from the federal government, because this is what we were doing, we were pumping lake water.
Well, then manholes were.
And storm, storm.
Manholes were underwater.
Yeah, so, so we, we have to get together and this, and boy, I tell you, the clock's ticking right now, because I've got the snow, snow packs for the area. And we're, we're quickly expecting another major flood. They said we prepare for another major flood, even though we're actually warm, right in this area, in northwest, it's actually a little below normal. It's in excessive east of us, and that water flows this way, so anticipate, depending on the spring rains and other stuff that they don't know for sure yet. But highly probable flooding, and so we have to get together and I'm going to see, it's another thing, I'll, I'll have to see.
Who, who said the highly probable flooding?
Look it up on the internet.
Well, I went to that water meeting.
What's that?
I went to the, the meeting at Macus, and they said they, they didn't know what to expect from the company.
Well, then they should, because if you look up on the internet, in the Regulating Properties Only Association, I just went through this with the county. And City of Fort Francis and the City of International Falls prepared for some of this stuff, and, and the map's out there. And this was before this last snowstorm. It is, the snow path east here, which all drains its way, and it says right there, highly probable floods. You know, and northwest, you know, I know they didn't have, we, we were lucky, we didn't hit a lot of the snow that we got. So all I'm saying is the COOTC management system for this flood, which should probably be Willie Kostcheck from the county board. If we can somehow get together with the FEMA and know the ground rules of how we can pump this or designate pump areas where we can get rid of this floodwater, not sewer water, this bill would be reimbursed. And that's what I'm trying to avoid, and this year we, we got to issue it and.
So the cost, the cost of us pumping it ourselves, it wouldn't matter the cost because we could anticipate them reversing.
That is correct, that's what I'm saying, if we do it correctly. If we just let it run to the sewer district and it's, we know it's floodwater, I mean, there's, you know, look, look, you're all, everybody knows. But if you intercept it, pump it prior to it going through these lift stations, and we have to find out exactly what they're going to accept. And we set, maybe set these temporary pumping areas up. And then it's reimbursable, and, and we can avoid this, you know, whatever, you know, look at there, it's, I don't know how many dollars, but it's, it's a lot. Not just us.
Well, it's going to be, it's going to be an increase of $5,400 a year.
Yeah, and that's just us, I mean, this sewer district too has to get on top of this, so it's reimbursable.
Is that, do you, is that something you feel like you should go meet with the sewer district about?
Well, I wish it was, you know, it's here, the first time he's not at a meeting, you know, is when we need him, so. I think that's what we'll have to have John. Also, I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but they have about 90 manholes that lie in International Falls and other areas that are receiving I and I, that's infiltration again. And then there's a, a little bit of piping that is also, I'm trying to remember the footage. I have, I actually have the blueprints in my office, because there's a job coming home for bids, and that would be something like youth attack, you know, where they find the silver mines. And then they will repair those manholes like we did. The Rainier had very few, by the way. We prepared ours, but there's about 90 in that I in the sewer district right now that need I and I. And it could be from grouting the range to putting, you know, sealing up, whatever methods there are. And so that project's coming out, and I don't know if that's why they're anticipating this much money or call it, try to correct that problem. They, they do have to correct it, so, and, and that's one of the reasons that there's so much I and I, but it's, it's sad, but it's not coming from us. We're stuck with it, so. I think, I recommend that we, we talk to John, that's what we got him for, and get some clarity on this and see if we can do that. Because he's not scary, he's raising his opinion as a sewer boy and stick up for Rainier, so we'll see if we can contact him. Cheryl, maybe you can make a phone call to him and see if we can get clarity on this and maybe is there any recourse or anything we can do? Because he knows all about the I and I and where it's coming from and all this other stuff. And that, that is another thing that we, we're, see if I can talk to whoever at the county, I believe it'd be Mr. Kostcheck. And see if I can get some kind of game plan on that. I don't sense beating that horse anymore, so. Mike, next item, information regarding potential ambulance attacks. I was thinking.
I was gazing outside, sorry.
Nice.
He got the JPA, I assume, he also received the letter that the committee has submitted, and I assume has received mine. I don't want to focus on mine, you can look at the rest at your leisure. I would recommend that the council move forward using extreme caution. I know that the county will probably be, will be taking this up on their meeting on the 21st. And it's my gut feeling that what will happen is they will table it at least through August. That's when the fifth county commissioner will be on board. At that time, I think what they're going to attempt to do is quite possibly provide some funding to support the deficit. As they did, I think, about six months ago or something, three months ago, I think they gave 125,000 to purchase an ambulance or whatever. There's, and the personal recommendation that I had is, if you look at that JPA, we only have one member on that JPA, if it goes forward. if you look at that J P A, we only have one member on that J P A, if it goes forward, I would highly recommend that you don't do that. Make it two council members, or the mayor and a council member, definitely make it two, you want to make it even. The, the, the second item is, uh, somehow, way, shape, or form, we need to bring the healthcare facilities on board with this because they're a direct benefit. They pay zero for any transports from the medical center to Duluth or to Pobegi or to wherever. There has to be some way to seek some funding from there. I, I don't believe it is legal for the ambulance service to charge them for that, it has to be free. So if the hospital calls, we have a medical transport, they go. There has to be some mechanism, maybe through their foundation or whatever, to get somebody to lessen the burden on the taxpayer, if in fact the J P A moves forward. And the third thing, and this is probably more important and definitely my concern, is the way that J P A is written, if we do agree to it, and then we decide to leave, and we can do that, we still have to be a member for two years. And then we can leave, but any debt incurred during that time, we own. And that's gonna be a burden on our taxpayers if, for example, they purchase a fire truck or whatever the case may be. So we need to look at that. There is a clause.
That's a tough one, because obviously you go to leave, it's really better by the, everything right now.
Right, you know, and I made, and I made that point known to the committee, and the response from International Falls as well, according to the legislation, you do incur the debt. And they're right, according to the legislation, but I'm not a lawyer. I don't know if there's a way around that, to alleviate that debt, if you will. And, and one thing that I would, that I would say is, if you, if you read the statutes, which I got from Cheryl today, because I didn't have an hard copy, we can pay for the, we can pay our share to the J P A if you move forward in many different ways. It would be up to the J P A board to decide how that's done. For example, right now, what, what the committee was thinking of was about a $50 tax, if you will, similar to the R F P A, real fire department, on properties that have a building on it that's worth more than $10,000, with some exceptions. That generates about $300,000 a year. However, if you read that, that statute, there's many different ways that you could fund that. It doesn't have to be by property, it doesn't have to be by resident. It could quite possibly be runs from Rainier residents to the hospital, which would alleviate Rainier from having to pay for a transport from the hospital to Duluth or to Sanford or to wherever. So there's multiple ways that they can go that you need to think of. But the bottom line is, my recommendation is move forward cautiously, don't say no, don't say yes. Wait till the county board makes a decision in October, under April, or on their March 21st meeting. My guess is they're going to delay this until after they get five commissioners on board and then move forward.
I received that letter today, as you mentioned, I don't know if you did, but I received a letter today where Jason Shulman had recommended
Yeah.
that until another council or until he had a.
Yeah, that was a minutes from our last meeting.
Yeah, yeah, so that, I received those minutes today, and I would mention on the board that he wasn't feeling comfortable until he had a forum.
Rightfully so.
Yeah, so rightfully so, because, you know, a lot of people would do something that.
Yeah. I, I do want to say that we are not unique, or the Falls is not unique in this. I mean, this is, this is not a statewide problem, it's a nationwide problem. And it's precipitated by the ridiculous amount of money that Medicare provides for ambulance services. I mean, it's absolutely ridiculous. And with the age of our citizens in this county, I mean, most of us, most, I am anyway, I'm on Medicare, okay? Medicare gives you X amount of nickels, and it's, it's not even a nickel, it's like pennies. I mean, it is absolutely ridiculous what they pay, but to get that change, have fun. Questions?
Does this mean like it's kind of on hold until the county has their deal probably in August or September?
Yes, and depending on what the, what the board, what the county board decides in August or September, we may not meet again. I mean, if they decide to tell International Falls, you know, we will provide you some funding, this may all go away. That's why I say to cautiously table this and wait.
Just wait to hear how it all plays out?
Yeah.
I have kind of something to burn up. So, Mike, at the end of your letter, you, you recommended to include a clause to this state J P A stating that if the J P A is disbanded or Rainier opts out of the J P A, we are not responsible for any incurred debt. So I'm assuming this is some sort, some kind of request and up an additional clause to this that we have to run by our city attorney to see if it's legal to do that?
Yes.
And we need to figure that out before we enter into anything that's binding? So is that something that we should consider going to our, our city attorney or? I mean, to see if it's possible, because if it's not possible, because there's, on the page five, it says that the, the political subdivision, if I'm understanding this correctly, may withdraw from this agreement and no longer be a member of the district. But then it goes on to say that the, uh, the taxable property of the withdrawing member remains subject to a property tax levy.
Exactly.
So I didn't, I was assuming that that meant that even if you leave, like, the left, the, the tax, taxable properties are still subject to what was originally agreed upon, if you understand?
That is correct.
Okay, okay.
So you can, what the Falls is asking for basically is a stopgap measure. I, I think it's like 1.3 million is the entire bill roughly. They pay a million, they run out of 300 million, a $300,000 deficit. Well, if this were to be set up on just basic, on just that $300,000, that translates the way that we have calculated, about 50 bucks per parcel over 15, over $10,000 or so. But if they buy an ambulance, or if they have to buy new equipment, that may be on top of that, and, and that would be debt incurred, which we would be liable for if we decide to dissolve. And of course, if the J P A board would approve that. So I, I mean, it's, it's a bit complicated, but I would, I would, I would talk to a lawyer.
Okay.
I'm not a lawyer.
Well, even, and I brought this up, you know, when they say $50 group tax parcel of $10,000, who they're trying to recover $300,000, the math says how many taxpayers are in the county? And so there's obviously multiple properties owned by individuals, but they own multiple properties that, you know, says, uh, and so if you look at how many taxpayers we have in the county, in the ambulance district, excuse me, ambulance district, but if there's, I don't get there's much more than 1,000 taxpayers. I mean, residents, excuse me, not taxpayers, there's parcels. But when you look at it, there's probably only a thousand, you know, a thousand that pay taxes. And so therefore, at 850, it's going to be, you know, $300. And I, and I'm just guessing at the numbers. Well, I mean, how many, how many households are there? You know, if there's 5,000 people in International Falls, there's only 1,000 people paying taxes. I mean, you know, five.
Pay property taxes.
Yeah, and, and so if they're trying to recover that 300,000, it isn't 50, it's, it's going to be 5 into 300, or whatever, so, so.
Actually, the way the numbers, that, the way the numbers worked out, it was, we looked at parcels that had a structure on it worth more than $10,000. Those parcels, whatever that number was, and I can't remember what was.
6,200 or around $6, it was a lot.
Okay, I, I, I don't know, I can't.
Yeah, it don't matter.
It doesn't matter, but anyway, it turned out to be about 50 bucks a parcel.
Yeah, now it makes sense, you know, 300 times 60 would be that.
Yeah.
But like you say, if you own a house, and then you've got a garage over there, this over there, everything's a $10,000 box dump. So you're gonna have a $50 bill for that, $50 bill for that.
If they're next to each other, they're gonna, isn't it, isn't it safe that if they're next to each other, they're not?
If you own two parcels.
No, I mean, again, it's, it's really, it's, it's really dicey, because if it's on the same thing, but, but at the end of the day, you know, if you own multiple buildings that are not on the same parcels and things like this, like you say, the formula's hard to follow. You know, for downtown, you, you've got a shop, you've got a house, you've got, I don't know what else, you've got a, in the district, that would be taxable. So you might get $150 or 300. It's going to be 50 if you only got one house, one room, or whatever, that's what they're saying.
That's right.
And so the rest, you have to calculate how many pieces you own.
And that's exactly, and that's exactly the same way that the R F P A works, and it's exactly the same way, actually, yeah. It's exactly the same way that the, that the school tax works, I mean, each parcel stops, you're not taxed by, you know, type of room, you're taxed by parcel.
The argument for that would be is, is if you've got a household, your garage is not going to be using, you know, ambulance service, the household is, the five people that live in your house are going to be using it. Obviously, the people who come in from out of town are staying in a hotel, like, we need it, but, you know, you're vacant property, everything, so. It's just a way of paying, again, uh, complete the formula. Hopefully, the county can come up with something, but I said, I recommend, I'm glad you're there, you're looking out for Rainier, appreciate that. It's, it's a dicey, it's, it's a dicey deal, like you said. We don't have this water, we're under the thousands of water, we don't have much choice there, we've been getting good water service. Like I said, we're trying to see how we can.
One of the.
That issue too, or the sewer district, you know, once you're perfected, you know.
One of, one of, one of the concerns that Commissioner Shulman, Jason, and he's right on this, is if this J P A, if this is set up, it lets the state off the hook. The state's gonna say, let's take care of it, I don't need to do anything.
You guys tax a bunch of.
And right now, I mean, this is, this is not a real high priority with the state, but it's on their radar. As a matter of fact, I do believe there's one or two bills out there right now that they want to dissolve this EMS board that oversees all the ambulance services, and they even want to create a, a department under, under the governor, like the Department of Commerce, D N R, and they want to create a department. Some folks think that that's a precursor to having the state take over all the ambulance services, and I don't know that you want that either, so.
Because they can put it on a tax.
Pardon?
They'll put a tax on it to fund it.
Doggone right, they will, and they're gonna take over control of it.
But they need so much money to operate their general fund, whether they pay for their general fund it, and it don't make, uh, that's always been my argument, you know, with, with the ambulance district, that the, the L G A that been given to International Falls in, in, you know, 92 times for Rainier gets, are to pay for some of these services that are burdened on them, but they've been compensated for only $2 million to take some of that burden off of, you know, like, like we don't need two libraries, we don't need, and they support that. We don't need to help the county on the airport, but we don't need two airports. So that's why they were given that, that additional L G A. And it goes to the general fund, so they're using it to, you know, they're probably, obviously they're using a million dollars to pay for their ambulance fund. But are they using, you know, it should have been a million three or something, so that's the argument there.
What would help them with their L G A and boost their L G A if the ambulance service, and this, this was ridiculous to me. The ambulance service is not considered an essential service. The police are, and the fire department are, not the ambulance.
Really?
Really?
You know, it's funny, because who you have to pull over for on the highway is not the police, the red light, you have to pull for the ambulance. So it's just get all the way, which is non-essential, so why do it in the red light?
So, I mean, it's, uh, it's a mess. It's a mess.
I don't think so.
Red water, Josh.
What's that?
Red water, Josh.
Yeah.
And Mike, again, I, I know you dig into things, you understand things, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you being there, because this is, this is a complicated issue. We all know we need ambulance services. Is there another way that we can keep the service or the quality? That's the first question, can we keep the service, can we keep the quality the same and, and reduce costs? You know, rather than just put a tax on it and charge more, you know, that's kind of been the way with a lot of governments, you throw more money at it, and it takes care of the problem.
But it always takes more money.
Yeah, it obviously takes more, it's never, you know, you'll have that same problem, that's why we're, what, 33 trillion dollars in debt? You throw more money at it, trying to figure out what to do. And, and that's one thing, I gotta say, we pride ourselves on staying on a budget and, and keeping everything in front of us, so.
One other thing, you know, that, that, the medical providers, and I just, and I'm not singling out Rainy Lake. I'm talking about all the medical providers, and there's actually three of them in town. They need to pay their fair share. I mean, it would be nice for them to support this just a little bit. How that happens, I don't know, maybe through a foundation, I don't, I don't know.
They have, I know that Rainy Lake has a foundation.
Yeah.
But I, again, I know that when it comes down to like services and how they can code for saving life through insurance and whatnot.
No, they can't do that.
No, no, no.
No, they can't, that's against the law, they can't do that.
But you're right, through the foundation, there could be something.
Maybe, you know, I don't know, I, I don't know, maybe.
It is kind of sad, because really, the end user that gets to charge, you know, that the ambulance applies the customer to the hospital, and the end user don't have to pay, but bring me the customer, but I'm not going to tip you. We don't even tip, you know what I mean? Tip the driver on the way for Christ's sake, but you know what I'm saying, that's, that's the sad part of it, because like you say, I know just from personal experience, if you jump in the ambulance chair, the minute you go to Duluth, they take you right to the E R, and you go through the same procedure that you did left, and they prep you, you get another $7,000 bill, and, you know, for the same thing that you just got checked. You handle the two half-hour ride, you must need it again, and who's shipping to that, wherever they drop you off at? So you think they'd be anxious to get that evidence pulled into their driveway so they can pay for that E R? But, I mean, they, they probably are, they just don't want to talk about it.
Um, International Falls did, um, ask one private ambulance provider for, for a quote. It was out of this world. But I, if I recall correctly, they're going to put out some kind of a request or proposal, just to see what it, what it would be to a number of those private ambulances. And I'd be willing to bet you the last nickel in my pocket that they're gonna come up twice as high, is what the Falls is doing.
And again, they're, they're set in a property density, population density, where, you know, so many people live in this circle, and they can run around and serve all lots of people, we're, you know, miles between. But it, it's, it's funny, because they got the school system set up, so that if you have a lone or one, you get extra money for each student. I can't see why medical should not be treated the same way. I mean, you know, seriously, you know, for every time, you know, a student goes to Little Fork, it is more than what we get, or more than what, I might be speaking out of term, but I know there's, there's low-density subsidies for education. It should be for everyone, too.
Did you hear, end this was gonna close?
That's the rumor.
It is, yes, it is.
Any more questions?
Well, keep us informed, I guess.
Huh?
Just let us know if something changes.
You guys started early, I wasn't here for the pleasure, the leisure, shame on you.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
See you later.
All right, moving on, uh. Have you seen that watershed plan?
Yeah.
Recommended approving memorandum of agreement on the watershed, that's where we'd like to be on the.
Are we gonna add some beyond that, right?
Yeah, we.
Mayor Wacker and Councilwoman Leimeyer.
Okay. I'll recommend approving the memorandum of agreement for the one watershed plan, and with, uh, Mayor Wagner and Councilwoman Leimeyer to be on that board, or have one as a backup, whatever they want to do.
Oh, yeah, right, this, right now, we're just, okay, just trying to recommend the memorandum of agreement. Yes, I think that was important, we discussed that pretty well in length last time, so, we have a recommendation second?
I'll second that.
You have a second, go up here.
Hi.
Oh, so carried. We have to move the committee in the whole meeting, we did a special election of the county commissioner on the April 11th.
And I would like to move it to the Monday instead of the Wednesday, so that'd be the 10th.
It's Easter Monday.
What's Easter Monday?
I just feel like my house has a.
But it's, it's occupied here on the whole site too, but yeah.
Or is it?
If Todd's coming on.
I, I would like to see how the town, to speak to you here today.
So do we have a date figured, or want to give that to everybody so we can figure it out? I'll put this, everybody get to Cheryl with, when they can meet, and, and then our next council meeting, we approve.
10th.
The meeting that comes out. Okay. We'll get to Cheryl with the date, looks for everybody, or at best we can, anyway. On that issue too, I want to make a clarification here, there was a misprint in the paper, and I did go see Tom last immediately after I got home. He said I was doing a write-in campaign for county commissioner. Actually, I had inquired if, over the telephone with one of the ladies that worked there, just to see if the filings were filed yet, and the date was already passed, and she, and she just said the only thing that was available was a write-in campaign. And so I had no intentions of, I was checking in the filings to make sure we had a representation or somebody could be running for that job, and there are two candidates running for that job, which is great, and so there was a misprint, just through communication. Tom apologized for it, he was going to take care of that, so I had no intention of resigning from the council here.
Yeah, I had a correction in the paper.
Pardon? Oh, yeah, I, I understand. Well, thank you. I just want to make that clear, because, two things, I don't want to take any votes away from, if I got it, away from any of the candidates that, you know, should, should have them, so I'm glad that's been clarified. I think Rainier has a future's coming up with the railroad and the companions in the street, getting sewer districts and all this other stuff, that, you know, looking for issues, there's plenty around here. We go, we get bigger. All right. Information regarding Cooch County Assessor, the open book meeting for Rainier for the property owners is April 12th, so if anybody wants to come in and understand their property assessments, is that correct?
At the assessor's office.
And where is that? The assessor's office for.
That's, that's the day for Rainier property owners to be able to go.
Kind of the issue there, the property's been reassessed along the riverfront, but not on the interior of Rainier, and so some people will see a huge increase in their taxes, I think about 75%. Again, I might be speaking out of the law, but I know there's been about a 75% increase in property along the river and the lake, but the interior of the property has, the interior homes in Rainier has not changed in property value, so there should really be no change in your properties in interior, unless you own lake front property or rear front property. There shouldn't have been much adjustment in your tax, taxes, but again, that's all open to the public, so if somebody has a question about it, I would suggest you go to that open meeting. Anything else? Or, or, there is an old floor, anybody got any questions? Sure, go ahead.
We're here about County Road 132 and water issue, the water break issue that we've been having, and we just want to bring into the attention that we've had many, many water breaks on that county road in the past 10 years. This last one dumped, whatever, is 120,000 gallons of water into my backyard, which flooded my newly remodeled, sunken living room. But I guess what we want to know is, is this going to be looked at? Is this on the agenda to be repaired?
Did you, did you, you must walked in late, can we?
He wasn't here.
Okay, I already addressed, I already addressed it. This is what I do for a living, I'm going to get Nick and try to see how much length of pipe we're looking at, we do have plants and everything, and I can form up a rough estimate of what it might cost. There is 80-some thousand dollars in a, an account, a sunset full account for repairs and replacement, and like I said, I'll, I'll try to get with Nick as soon as possible. Obviously, that wouldn't be done till, you know, weather conditionings, but we're going to look at that, because we had multiple repairs there last year, and we realized there's some deterioration, it's the end of the line, so we're, you know, we'll look and see what might be the best answer to the project. And, and try to get a cost estimate, and then also, we are going to try to meet with our county commissioner, because obviously, there's some road damage out there, too, and we're going to see if we can get some, some relief with help with the road repairs, which sometimes end up to be more than the water repair, and so maybe they can help us on that issue, so appreciate that.
Very well aware, you know, how many times they've gone down in the middle, and it's kind of frustrating on your end also, you know, this last time, we were, we're not going to go, you know, hours, you know, you weren't there.
I totally understand the problem, so if you've got water again, and, and we'll have to get through the mud tunnels and, and the thing, we'll keep monitoring that and try to keep the roads level and stuff like that, but we'll be assessing the issue and trying to get a price on it, and it's, it's already on the radar.
Okay.
Okay. With that, to improve other information, I met with the city of International Falls, along with a board member of the Rainier Properties Association, and I met with them yesterday at their council meeting, and I continued on and met with Fort Francis Council, and then previously, about a week ago, I, we had met with Cooch County, and we are trying to form a coalition between Rainier, International Falls, Fort Francis, Cooch County, and we're going to try to get hold of Lake of the Woods County, also St. Louis County, and First Nations, to see if we can form a coalition and see if we can get some relief. We've got a, a letter published to attorney, and it's been ghostwritten, so it's out there, but we're trying to form a coalition to see if we can negotiate and bring the railroad to the table, to see if we can get, you know, some, some action on it, and that's where some of this flooding and, and areas, and try to make it a little more transparent on what's going to happen and how it's going to happen. I think by forming a larger group, you make a bigger noise, and that's it, so I'm going out, trying to get this, and each government body is, is looking into the proposal, and will begin back to us, so I'll keep you posted on that, maybe by next week I'll have much as equal cheers or as commitments. With that said, anything else? Motion to adjourn. Got a motion? Second?
I'll second.
And a second. All in favor? Aye. So carried.